I'm sorry. The regular meeting of the U.S.A.R. City Council for February the 5th, 2019 is called to order. Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could you please remain standing for a moment? It is with great sadness that we announced the death of Joan Trucco, mother of our council member Bruce Trucco. We give a moment of silence, please. May she rest in peace. And also, we'd like to acknowledge the passing of Jack Bennix. It's Mr. Bennix because he was one of the coaches at the high school when I was there, and so many of us were there, and he was there for 30 years. He also, after he retired, was the service safety director for the city of U.S.A.R. from 1996 until 1998. So a moment of silence, please, for him. May he rest in peace. Thank you. Local, please.
McKiever.
Here.
Meyer.
Here.
Wireball.
Here.
Trucco.
Here.
Both.
Here.
Shaw.
Here.
Before you, you have the minutes of the January 15th, 2019 regular meeting. I need a motion to accept these minutes.
Salute second.
Motion by Mr. McKiever, second by Mr. Myers, to accept the January 15th, 2019 regular meeting minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passes. You also have before you the minutes from the January 29th, 2019 special council meeting. I need a motion to accept those minutes.
Salute. Second.
Motion by Mr. Foote, second by Mr. McKiever, to accept the minutes from the special meeting of January the 29th, 2019. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Thank you. This is the time where we grant permission for visitors to speak. Our first speaker this evening is Police Chief Dave Cepke, who is here with us. And he's going to give us a short account of what the year is all about.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, members of council, members of the audience, and to the citizens of U.S.A.R. Thank you for the opportunity to share with you a review for the police department for 2018. And I will say, it'll be a challenge to keep it short.
I know. It always is.
Actually, January 2019 has been rapid and busy, and some amazing things have happened in the last month. And I'm going to reflect on 2018. And one of the things I reflect on is a program that we implemented two years ago called Operation Hope. And slowly but surely, people have come actually forward to the police department asking for rehabilitation help and placement. And over the course of last year and the year before, it averaged about two people a month, 17 for the year. And in the last month, we had 12 people. And if that's an indication, there's been a sea change in attitude about the ability to go to the police department without fear that there actually is hope for overcoming addiction. So with that said, actually, it would wear one person out, it would wear the entire police department out, and Officer Kramer can attest to this. Our role in dealing with problems in a community like this has changed steadily, it's been a bit of an evolution. And the governor spoke about this the other day, but police officers are put in a position now of actually being a sponsor for people that are addicted. And at the end of the report, you'll see a reflection on the community. About 10 years ago, we had $6 million of healthcare fraud that was prosecuted by the FBI. We had 225,000 pills that were distributed by one doctor alone in this county illicitly. And that set us up for a tremendous downturn in our economy. It was a sentence to addiction for so many people. And to get past the stigma of addiction is very difficult, because so many people became addicted in different ways. It's a very complicated issue, and long ago, we said we couldn't arrest our way out of the problem. That being said, officers now, 10 years later, are seeing firsthand, everybody's different. Our jail is always being full. I'll probably in the upcoming weeks say it's critical that we maintain our jail, which that'll be on the ballot soon. That was the detox facility, the only one available to us now across Ohio. We've escorted people to detox facilities in Mount Vernon, Worcester, Fremont, East Liverpool. We have to go 40 miles or more to help people. And there's rehab opportunities all across the state, and jail is not the only answer. But without the jail, there's many more people in our county that would be dead, and our crime rate would be much higher. I have a great report to share with you, because our crime rate has stayed at a five-year low, our criminal activities are at a five-year low. And that goes hand in hand with addressing the addiction problem as an all of the above approach. So it also fits in with our mission statement, which is committed to courtesy, integrity, and excellence. The U.S.A.R.'s police department endeavors to make the city of U.S.A.R. a community where our citizens feel safe to reside, I should say, safe to approach the police department for help under any circumstance, engaging the citizens in a partnership with the police, using everyone's wisdom, support, and resources to solve the concerns of the community. And I think the addiction issue is a perfect example of that. I'm sitting next to one of the leaders. When that was happening 10 years ago, it took families to change the mind of courts and law enforcement that we had to approach this in a different way, because lives were being lost by doing it the old way. We still follow the community-oriented policing model. We care. We have courtesy, integrity, and a people-oriented workplace. And I can attest to officers like Officer Kramer, everybody has a big heart and wants to help people. It's not all about making arrests. We still make plenty of arrests. The only category that went up last year was felony arrests, the cases that are most important, went up slightly. Even at 158 felonies, that's still just a five-year average. So it's not bad. It means we're doing good work. Following that mission statement, we recognize that the ability to serve the community relies on your approval and cooperation to maintain order and reduce crime as much as possible, if possible. Therefore, to build positive relationships for a better U.S.A.R. Our mission statement is based on the community policing philosophy, which has its roots in the Ninth Principles of Policing by Sir Robert Field. The Ninth Principle is the test of police efficiency, is the absence of crime and disorder, not the visible evidence of police action dealing with it. Is crime absent? Of course not. But overall criminal activity is the best it's been and remains so, I would have to say. But that's because of partnership with the community. We have, by my count, at least 46 volunteers with the police department. Above and beyond the 25 people who work in the police department, actually 26. Our utility person, Al Williams, is retiring this April, so we're going to miss him. But that, my math is not great, but if you go from 25 to 46, we're well at, we're approaching 70. Some people involved in that endeavor. And when the revolution was fought, 2% of the people in this land made the revolution happen. If we had 240 people in this community working on public safety and law enforcement, I think we do, that's all it takes to make a difference. And we have to work together, all our fire department, EMS, all of our social service agencies, we work together and depend on each other. And I'll reiterate, we depend on having a justice center that's fully funded. Without the volunteers, though, we wouldn't have Operation Hope. We wouldn't have police explorers. But police auxiliary does tremendous work behind the scenes. Again, the absence of police action, but behind the scenes, this is the time to recognize these volunteers that are making a difference in the community, and they don't make the news. The next thing I'm going to talk about is Neighborhood Watch, and I've talked about this a lot, but to maybe lighten the mood a little bit, we've introduced a virtual neighborhood network, another evolution, I think, that helps crimes stay low, is security systems, security cameras. And we've had many minor, some serious cases solved with people sending videos to us, pictures. And what we're asking the public to do now with the virtual neighborhood network is register their cameras voluntarily. They're not obligated to share anything with us, but if there's an action that happens near their camera, we can say there was a theft from a car in the 800 block of South Walnut Street. Could you, anyone in the area, please check your footage and see if maybe there's some evidence that you might see. We had, two nights ago, somebody walking down Walnut Avenue near Wallace must have been carrying a large glass container, and he might have slipped on a patch of ice because the container and the pennies were spread in about a 50-foot radius on the ground. And Lieutenant Ward picked up most of the pennies, they're all down, and put them in a five-gallon bucket, and it weighed 73 pounds. So anyone at Wallace and Walnut, if you have security cameras, please check your footage in the early morning hours to see if we see the crash of the penny piece. And maybe we'll be able to identify the suspect. But that's how we work together, though. We didn't have, and there was a video that we have on our Facebook page about you and your dumpy that'll be in court tomorrow. And that was within moments, it solved the matter, because we all identified who was responsible, and they'll be talking to Mr. Rattle tomorrow morning. In 2018, we welcomed three new officers, Daniel Ruffner, Doug McDonald, and Andrew Plummer. And the third officer was by our partnership with the U.S.A.R. Schools and the School Resource Officer Program. Their funding allowed us to have a second resource officer, and that's James Mata. He joins Officer Joe Stahl, who's the dare officer. And the SRO program, again, statistically speaking, there's no way I can give you statistical evidence of all the diversion, intervention, and prevention work that they do to keep kids on the straight and narrow and out of juvenile court. And as my friend Sam used to always say, we want to keep kids out of court, not in court. And we want to keep them busy at the parks, after school, and doing athletics and art and music in their homework rather than legal work. So Officer Mata and Officer Stahl are making a difference at the school. And by the same token, we know who the kids are that might get in trouble, and our curfew arrested did go up a little bit last year. I've already spoke about the police fighting addiction program, Operation Hope, and we'll continue pursuing that. We now have a helpline for Operation Hope. Our certified coach recovery counselor volunteer, Santana Stamper, and she is the first line of contact for the 419, oh, I don't remember the number off the top of my head. Look it up online. You'll see it. And it's on the police Facebook page. And the phone has been very active, obviously, in January. Going back 10 years, the economic impact of healthcare fraud and illegal dispensing of pills was tremendous. If we have 200 people actively in addiction in our county, which I would contend we do even now, that's approximately a $5 million exit of money from our local economy towards drug abuse. Recently, Crawford Works has a great program going, and we got the pleasure of hearing, actually, Kwanzaa and Hungary, a presentation from Robin Hill Brand. And 60-plus people are successful in completing Crawford Works, and that has a positive impact on our economy of $700,000. So if we keep working on things like that, I think we'll see real progress, and hopefully we'll start to see it this year, as more people, and in Operation Hope, there's so many successes. Some of the volunteer coaches themselves have recovered and have their own businesses. They're doing very well, and that's great news. And 562-9310 is not Operation Hope.
It's an emergency crisis line.
That is, that is the emergency crisis line, but you can ask for it there.
I wondered whether it was clear yet.
I just want to thank, again, the U.S.A.R. Schools for their partnership. Safety Town is as strong as ever. And I wanted to thank Sarah Lipscomb for all her hard work she's been up with her academics. The firefighters and police officers have to pull more of the weight in leading Safety Town in the years ahead than we will. And it's been a great program. We did have a new approved Safety Town site at the school last year. And we're asking the citizens, you'll see some mailing from me, asking for financial support for Safety Town to help firefighters and police officers work with incoming kindergartners on, say, near around the streets, around the bus, at home. And that's their introduction to being in school, so, you know, on the sidewalks. So we want them to be out there with some information. And with that, I'm going to ask you to look at the statistical report. The biggest change in the statistical report, 88% difference in failures to pay income tax. Maybe there's a rally that speaks to that or the other. The other categories typically are reduced some in the felony categories. You're going to see increases in felony domestic violence and felony forgery. I want to remind the public, it's not rude to be shrewd, the people on the phone. We had more calls about scams today on the phone, especially this time in view of the IRS. Don't fall prey to being the nice person answering the phone, and then the next thing you know, you're out at Walmart or Kroger buying a gift card to execute a wire transfer, and you're out $500, or you're out $1,000. If somebody's calling you on the phone from the IRS, that's not true, it's a scam, they won't call you. How do they contact you?
Sometimes, it could be even a local number, and you think it's someone you know, and then you pick it up, and they're telling you that you're going to go to jail if you don't contact them or send them money right away.
So it's not rude to be shrewd. It's best to hang the phone up and do business through official channels, like the mail. If you have any questions, of course, call the police department. We want you to report any suspicious activities, whether it's in the mail, email, phone calls, let us know so we can share it with everyone else in the public, so that we avoid being victims of scams. And I want to talk about a couple things. We have upcoming a basic handgun safety awareness course, which we're taking registrations for right at this time at the police desk. Retired auxiliary Mike Schiefer is an NRA instructor, and he will teach all the basics of legal handling and safe handling of firearms. And at the conclusion of the course, you'd be eligible for applying for a CCW permit. Also, at the police desk, we have the registration for the Virtual Neighborhood Watch program. It's a voluntary program. We simply ask if you'll let us know so that we can keep a log of where the cameras are that'll help us to investigate it more quickly, and knows by the public where activity is and if they can use the cameras, hopefully to help us out, solve crime. I don't have anything else. I'm looking forward to a break 2019. I hope I was able to be brief enough.
You did, okay.
Okay. Only 15 minutes.
I know, it'd be a little over. Okay. Any questions or anything you want to address with the chief right now? No? Okay, thank you very much. That was interesting news this year. It was a lot of changes, and I'm most interested in how you're saying that how the police work has to be accomplished now is so different than it was 10 years ago, and what the training officers were doing.
Crisis intervention training, proud to say, almost everyone in our department has that training. It's made a huge impact on how we respond to mental health crises and any other kind of crisis that usually involves emotions and tragedy.
Well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anyone else to address council this evening? No one? Moving on to communications and petitions.
We have two communications. The first one is dated January 16 from the Planning Commission to City Council regarding items approved by the Planning Commission for council review and approval. Dear Council President, the U.S.A.R. City Planning Commission met on Thursday, January 10, 2019. The Planning Commission approved the following items and requests they be submitted to the appropriate council committees for review and approval. One, Route 3 sewer separation project. And two, proposed zoning expansion of the Neighborhood Business District through South Poplar Street and South Walnut Street, from Charles Street to Oakwood Avenue. Thank you, Mayor Jeffrey Surratt, Sherman Planning Commission, and there are two referrals to that.
Okay. The first one for the Group 3 Sewer Separation Project needs to be referred to Plating Committee and to Finance. I need a motion, please.
Salute second.
Motion by Mr. McKiever, second by Mr. Myers, to refer the Group 3 Sewer Separation Project to Plating and Finance Committee. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Then we also have the proposed zoning expansion of the Neighborhood Business District. That needs to go to Plating Committee. Do I have a motion, please?
Salute Plating.
Motion by Mr. McKiever, second by Mr. Foote, for the proposed zoning expansion to Plating. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Thank you.
We have a letter from the Traffic Commission dated January 21 to the Health and Safety Committee. Dear Health and Safety Committee, the City of U.S.A.R. Traffic Commission would like to recommend an amendment to the traffic control map that repeals a portion of ordinance number 192017, one to remove the additional four parking places on the west side of the courthouse or North Wall Street. The history of these Traffic Commission recommendations are attached, and that'll be in the key term, because they will not be in fact till Thursday. Sincerely, Jeffrey Surratt, Mayor, and that has been referred to the Health and Safety Committee.
Okay, I need a motion then to put this into Health and Safety Committee to remove those four additional parking spaces on the west side of the courthouse.
Salute second.
Motion by Mr. Shaw, second by Mr. Foote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Thank you. Moving on to our standing committee reports. Mr. Foote, would you like to take the start with that?
U.S.A.R. City Joint Regular Committee meeting, that Thursday, January 17, 2019, meeting was called to order at 6:01 PM. Members present, Mark McKiever, Kevin Myers, Dan Wireball, Bruce Trucco, myself, and Andrew Shaw. Monica Sack was absent. Up first, U.S.A.R. City Joint Regular Committee meeting was called to order by myself at 6:01 PM. Number two, public participation, there was none. Number three, Order of Committee Business, Economic Development Committee met first at 6:02 PM. Members in attendance, Dan Wireball, Mark McKiever, and myself, Chair. Up first, we have subcommittee appointment. Council received a letter from the City Planning Commission asking that it consider approving the reappointment of Robert Field to the commission for a six-year term. McKiever made a motion to reappoint Field to the commission, with a second by Wireball. Motion passed by voice vote. The matter now goes to full council for a vote on February 5. Vote recessed Economic Development Committee at 6:03 PM.
Okay, I need a motion from council to approve the appointment of Robert Field to the City Planning Commission.
Salute second.
Motion by Mr. Wireball, second by Mr. Myers. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Thank you very much. And Mr. Field, we look forward to you being around for another six-year term. And those commissions that these people volunteer for, they get no pay for, but they serve, it's a good service to our community that they provide. So we're very appreciative of that. Okay, moving on, Health and Safety Committee. Mr. Myers?
Health and Safety Committee met at 6:03 PM. Members present, Mark McKiever, Bruce Trucco, Andrew Shaw, and Kevin Myers, Chair. Item one, mutual aid agreement. Fire Captain Chad Twenley noted that Portsmouth Emergency Ambulance Service Incorporated has requested that the U.S.A.R. Fire Department provide mutual aid for the city, as well as U.S.A.R. and Liberty Townships. Law Director Robert Hatliff observed that the Service Safety Director has the authority to enter into a mutual aid contract without the need of legislation. McKiever made a motion to allow the Service Safety Director to enter into contract with Portsmouth Ambulance for mutual aid in the City of U.S.A.R. and Liberty Townships, or the City and U.S.A.R. and Liberty Townships, with a second by Trucco. Motion passed by voice vote. No legislation is required. The matter now goes to the full council for a vote on February 5.
Your last round.
Oh, I thought you were going to be the first. My apologies. Myers recessed the Health and Safety Committee at 6:11 PM.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments regarding that report? Then I do need a motion then to enter into contract with Portsmouth Ambulance for mutual aid in the City and the U.S.A.R. and Liberty Townships.
Salute second.
Motion by Mr. Foote, second by Mr. Myers. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Thank you. That's taken care of. Moving on, Mr. McKiever, Plating Committee.
Yes, Plating Committee met Thursday, January 17, at 6:11 to 6:14. Members present, Bruce Trucco, Kevin Myers, and myself, Chair. Number one, Group 2 Sewer Bids. Service Safety Director Jeff Wagner explained that Randstad Carroll, Inc. wants to go out to bid in March for the Group 2 Sewer Project, part of the city's ongoing combined sewer overflow reduction project. The probable cost, construction cost, including a 10% contingency, is $989,629.47. Myers made a motion to request legislation authorizing the Service Safety Director to advertise for bids and to enter into a contract not to exceed $989,629.47 for the Group 2 Sewer Project, and authorizing the auditor to draw a warrant. Trucco seconded the motion, which passed by voice vote. The matter was referred to the Finance Committee. McKiever recessed Plating Committee at 6:14 PM.
Can I thank you? Any questions or comments regarding the minutes? Okay, I need a motion then for, I don't, not for this one. That one, we have legislation forthcoming. Okay, we did go with legislation for that one. Moving on, then, we have Public Lands and Buildings. Mr. Wireball?
Okay, Public Lands and Buildings Committee met Thursday, January 17, 2019, 6:14 PM. It finished up at 6:27. Members present, Bruce Trucco, Doug Foote, Mark McKiever, and myself. First up was ODOT paving, State Route 4. Council President Sisla referred an ODOT project to pave a quarter mile of State Route 4 of the US, a quarter mile of State Route 4 north of the US 30 bypass to the committee. The city corporation line abuts the east side of State Route 4 there, just north of where State Route 19 branches off to the west. And the city portion of this project cost would be $6,250. ODOT requires consent legislation from the city to move ahead with this project. McKiever made a motion to request such legislation, with a second by Foote. Motion passed by voice vote. The matter was referred on to the Finance Committee. ODOT requires consent legislation by February 1st for the city to move ahead with the paving of North Sandusky Avenue or State Route 4 from Plymouth Street to the US 30 bypass, with the city's portion of the project cost coming to $206,000. ODOT also requires a resolution of cooperation by February 1st from the city to move ahead with the paving of Marion Road or State Route 4 from South Sandusky Avenue to the city's south corporation line, with the city's portion of the project costing, cost coming in, coming to $212,668. Foote made a motion to request the desired legislation pertaining to the ODOT projects on North Sandusky Avenue and Marion Road, with a second by McKiever. Motion passed by voice vote. The matters were referred to the Finance Committee. Part of that, bids. Service Safety Director Jeff Wagner explained that six ordinances are needed to authorize his office to advertise for bids, the leasing of 10 parcels of tillable land locally. his office to advertise for bids, the leasing of ten parcels of tillable land located out, totaling about one hundred and thirty-five acres for the growing of crops, which is typically done for a three-year period. The city made twenty-four thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars on the last round of bids in twenty sixteen. The ten parcels are along Crowder Road in Bussiris Township comprising part of Shrine Park, formerly the Bussiris Shrine Runway, off West Southern Avenue in the city of the way, at the wastewater treatment plant on the southwest side of the property, in Liberty Township on Keys Road at the northeast corner of Off-Wake Reservoir, in Liberty Township along State Route Ninety-eight, east adjoining Off-Wake Reservoir, in Bussiris Township adjoining runways of the airport and in the city at the airport adjacent to State Route Ninety-eight and the railroad tracks north of the auxiliary runway. Foote made a motion to request six ordinances authorizing the Service Safety Director to advertise for bid, the leasing of the ten tillable parcels, with a second by Truca. Motion passed by voice vote. Wireball recessed Public Lands and Buildings Committee at six twenty-seven P. M.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments regarding the minutes of that meeting? Okay, thank you. Moving on, Finance Committee. Mr. Wireball?
Okay. Pardon me. Oh. The Finance Committee met Thursday, January seventeen, two thousand and nineteen. It began at six twenty-seven P. M. and finished up at six forty-two P. M. Members present, Kevin Myers, Andrew Schock, and myself, Acting Chair, Monica, bust Addison. Group Two Sewer Bids, Randstetter Carroll Incorporated wants to go out to bid in March for the Group Two Sewer Project, part of the city's ongoing combined sewer overflow reduction project. The probable construction cost, including a ten percent contingency, is nine hundred and eighty-nine thousand, six hundred and twenty-nine thousand, forty-seven cents. The Plating Committee has requested legislation authorizing the Service Safety Director to advertise for bids and to enter into contract not to exceed nine hundred and eighty-nine thousand, six hundred and twenty-nine dollars and forty-seven cents for the Group Two Sewer Project and authorizing the auditor to draw a warrant. Myers made a motion approving the legislation request, with a second by Schock. Motion passed by voice vote. Next up was the ODOT paving of State Route Four. ODOT requires the following three pieces of legislation to proceed with the repaving of State Route Four. Consent resolution for paving quarter mile of State Route Four north of U. S. thirty bypass, with city responsible for six thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars of project cost. Consent resolution for paving North Sandusky Avenue from Plymouth Street to U. S. by thirty bypass, with city responsible for two hundred and six thousand dollars of project cost. Legislation needed by February first. Cooperation resolution for paving Marion Road from South Sandusky Avenue to the city's south corporation line, with city responsible for two hundred and twelve thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight dollars of project cost. Legislation needed by February first. The Public Lands and Buildings Committee has requested the three pieces of legislation. Schock made a motion to approve the first request, with a second by Myers. Motion passed by voice vote. Schock made a motion to approve the second request, with a second by Myers. Motion passed by voice vote. Myers made a motion to approve the third request, with a second by Schock. Motion passed by voice vote. Council members decided to schedule a special full council meeting on Tuesday, January twenty-ninth, at six P. M. to consider the three ODOT resolutions. Next up was the Fire Department's bid. Fire Captain Chad Schwendly noted that the bid for the expenditure of federal assistance to firefighters' grant funds to purchase breathing apparatus equipment came in over the estimate of one hundred and sixteen thousand, four hundred and twenty-four dollars, included in Resolution Number Two Forty-three dash twenty eighteen, necessitating a new resolution for an amount not to exceed one hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. Schock made a motion requesting legislation authorizing the Service Safety Director to advertise for bids and enter into contract for the purchase of the equipment using grant funds not to exceed one hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, with a second by Myers. Motion passed by voice vote. Enterprise Fund reimbursements. Auditor Joyce Schiffer explained that the percentage breakdowns for the Enterprise Fund reimbursements for twenty eighteen expenditures are the same as the year before. An amount of eight, one hundred and sixty-two dollars and twenty-one cents from each Enterprise Fund has been added to reimburse, reimburse the general fund for one month of the telephone system purchase, a total of seventy-two thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars and seventy-three cents per fund, which is twenty percent of the total amount, will be charged to the Waterworks Sewage Disposal Solid Waste and Stormwater Utility Funds. Myers made a motion to request legislation reimbursing the general fund from the various other funds to defray the twenty eighteen operation costs of the city's municipal offices, with a second by Schock. Motion passed by voice vote. Appropriations. Schiffer reported that the following appropriations need to be made. First, from unappropriated general funds, twenty thousand dollars to Program One Security of Persons and Property backslash seventy-one-ten and seventy-one-eleven, Police Department backslash twenty-three, Contractual Services for a grant received from the Adam Age Board for a Quick Response Team project to help addicts into recovery. Next, from unappropriated general funds, one thousand, seven hundred and fifteen dollars and eight six cents to Program One Security of Persons and Properties backslash seventy-one-ten and seventy-one-eleven, Police Department backslash twenty-four, Materials and Supplies for a donation received from Projects Incorporated for the police explorers. Schock made a motion to request legislation making the above appropriations, with a second by Myers. Motion passed by voice vote. Wireball recessed the Finance Committee at six forty-two P. M.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions or comments about any of the items from the Finance Committee report? We will report that the council did, as you heard at the very beginning, we had a meeting on January the twenty-ninth, twenty nineteen, a special meeting about these, these three ODOT pieces of legislation, and they were passed at that time in a timely manner and then sent on to ODOT to keep them happening. And that took place. So, do you like to finish for us then, please?
Sure. Public Participation. Truca asked for an update on any planning changes to the water line at the water plant's fault water station. Service Safety Director Jeff Wagner says he's in the midst of reaching out to water haulers about what improvements they'd like to see. Wireball asked for a motion to adjourn, adjourn the Joint Regular Committee. Motion by Foote and second by McKeever to adjourn at six forty-four P. M. Motion passed. Henry, you can sign.
Thank you.
That's why I give the left every time I get shot.
Okay. Moving along, Traffic Commission. We don't have any minutes from the Traffic Commission, but there are any traffic questions you'd like to address to the mayor this evening? Anyone? None?
Should I get a shuttle boat?
Moving on, I need a motion to accept the committee minutes and related committee reports collectively.
So, move.
Motion by Mr. Foote, second by Mr. McKeever, to accept the committee reports and related committee reports collectively. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. This is where we have a reporter, city officers, Mayor Reeser.
Thank you, Madam President. Before I start, I want to mention about Mr. Bennings. Many of us had him as a teacher in school and head coach all the time. I'm fortunate to have him as a coach here at Class Act. I may have a few words, but when he spoke, you listened. And the other person I want to single out is Chief Kepke. He's too humble to tell you, but I asked him what he thought of the Super Bowl, and he didn't get to see it because he was taking someone to rehab some evening. And that's the kind of guy that he is. So, thank you, Chief. Thank you, I appreciate that. I also told you not to stay. You can leave if you want to.
I'm waiting for Mr. Rallies to report.
Okay. All right. Well, I guess.
I suppose.
Sure. A couple things. First of all, Kelly and I met with Historical Society last month about plans to come in by Centennial Celebration in twenty twenty-one. But did you know that the Nortons actually arrived in Bussiris in eighteen nineteen, two hundred years ago?
This year.
Yeah, this year. And we were informed of that too by Historical Society. And so, guess what? We're gonna have Sam and Mary Norton Day. They have a ton of plans in Saturday before Labor Day, and I'm going to have a little celebration at the yard park. So, the corporation actually took place in eighteen twenty-one, so the big celebration will be in twenty twenty-one. We also had the bid opening for the sale of Water Garage in Marion Road. Had one bid, and it was acceptable, and it was awarded at the Board of Control meeting. Car, Public Safety Equipment is coming to the Bussiris Business Committee and will be occupying that, that, we're very excited to have them. Their business outfits, safety deals, police cars, and they hired E. S. and family business. So, we've sold two properties. The decision to move to ODOT was a, was a good one. We've got now about, roughly about four hundred thousand dollars. Hensley's bought the building on Mary Street Garage, and they're, they're in there now. We closed on that. So, we have enough money that we're starting to do some work. We'll be painting and carpeting and do some work on the buildings. And again, moving out there here in, hopefully, the spring, it's over the summertime too, to live. I mean, we've, we're able to sell these buildings and also bring jobs to the community. So, very happy about that. And Mr. Wagner, myself, and Kelly Patterson, our administrative assistant, sponsored a bowling party last Saturday. We had a great time. You were there as a number one cheerleader and/or heckler, you know, so we appreciate that.
Whatever worked out best.
We had a lot of fun. It was a much, everybody showed up, and we had a great time. Butch and Robin, Pat and I, we do a great job, and they made, made sure we had a good time. So, that's my report. I do want to, there's some, in front of you, I have some issues, some things I wanted to bring up about water rates because there's a lot of comments about our, our water rates, especially you all have in front of you, and I call it the facts concerning our water portion of our utility rates. So, I want to do this in a series of all the lines. If you were able to watch the mayor's roundtable, we addressed some of this. It's on YouTube or on our city website, but I want to get this out there. Fact number one and number two, I'm going to combine them as one. We can't live without water. That's, that's astute, we have to be obvious. And number two, we are obligated as city officials to provide clean, safe water. So, having said that, we, the new water plant, which opened in two thousand and seventeen, and a fact number three, replaced the plant built in nineteen forty, seventy years old roughly, and, and well past its useful life. It was producing water, but it was needing major repairs. The more, more sinister to me was, in two thousand and seven, we had the citywide flood. It came with, literally within inches of compromising our water supply. And we were told that we would have been without water probably up to six months as a city. And that crippled industry, it just, you know, there's only so much bottled water that you could bring in. So, administrations, previous administrations saw that, and kudos to them for, you know, starting the process on that. Fact number four, council voted unanimously in two thousand and fourteen to proceed with the contract to build a new plant. That was the Roger Moore administration. I'm going to insert fact number four and a half. Roger Moore led that fight, but four and a half is our administration figured out how we have to pay for it, right? So, thank, we can thank Roger for that. May he rest in peace. So. Number five, the water portion of the utility bill had not seen a rate increase since two thousand and two. And that goes back to several administrations, that not even keeping up with inflation and causing new contracts. Number six, less than six hundred thousand dollars had been put aside in a special fund to offset the cost of the plant because previous administrations didn't feel the need to do that. Water rates were kept artificially low for twelve years. Number seven, the cost of the plant was estimated to be approximately twenty-five million dollars, but the accepted bid was about twenty-two million, five hundred thousand dollars. We were ecstatic, but it's ten percent under the cost. Interest rates had also bottomed out at that time, and the city was able to lock in a rate less than two percent. I think it's one, Joyce can correct me, I think it's one point six seven, I think we're paying.
One point five seven.
One point five seven, okay, even better. So, we were able that time then to combine two proposed loans, a thirty-year and a twenty-year, into one lower one and a lower rate, and saved us millions of dollars over the course of repaying that loan back. Number eight, there were no government grants for new water treatment facilities, and none exists today. So, you can drag your Columbus all you want and meet with reps, and you go to Washington D. C., wherever you want, there's no money out there. And there's no sense in even mentioning that because it's, it's not there. You know, whether it's there in the future, we will be the first to know about it, you know. Each community is responsible for paying for their own plant with the help from low-interest loans like we have. So, number nine, the city must repay the amount that was financed, and the loan must be paid back with user fees. We cannot use general fund money. User fees are how much water we sell, right? Amortization costs are about a million eight per year. We pay twice a year, July first and December, like the end of June and then December, right? Am I correct, Josh, right?
Yes.
Okay. And future elected officials, people that sit in these seats, will have the opportunity in eighteen years, eighteen short years, when that mortgage is burnt, and you will be able to decide that some of you are still here, what you want to do with rates. If you want to drop them then, you can do that. What's that?
I'm still young.
You're still just a kid. Yeah. I'm looking, that's why I'm looking to do that, so in case you wondered. Fact number ten, rates have not tripled, as recently mentioned in the press. Rate for a thousand cubic feet in two thousand and fourteen was six dollars and seventy-one cents, and now it's eleven dollars and forty-eight cents. That's not tripling, right? We've gone, to just give you the big picture, we've gone from about a two and a half million dollar water fund budget to about a four and a half million dollars. So, we need to raise about two million dollars to pay for the loan, right? Very simple arithmetic. All right. The rate graph that is being circulated on social media in this meeting, the earliest record that we have for water rates is from nineteen seventy-eight, it was a dollar twenty per thousand cubic feet. We don't know how long that rate was in effect. That rate could have been put in effect in seventy-eight, or it could have been effective in sixty-eight or sixty, we don't know. It could have been twelve years or whatever. So, the, the inflation amount is very misleading. So, let's consider that possibly the rate ineffective in nineteen seventy-eight had been in effect for twelve years. So, you see what happens on the inflation rate then. That bid in inflation, two thousand and eight, nineteen dollars is almost ten dollars for a thousand cubic feet, a little less than ten dollars. And we haven't even taken into account, we're building a new plant too, right? Fact number twelve, the utility department in nineteen seventy-eight was non-unionized. Costs per employee have risen significantly, so it's, and you can't compare costs in two thousand and eighteen with nineteen seventy-eight. Also, keep in mind that how, what, everyone knows what hospitalization has done in those years. We are paying, just for that one department, over two hundred thousand dollars. That's five percent of our budget roughly, just for water utility hospitalization costs. Now, we have retirement buyouts that are partly due to contract. And when we have to pay, if they have sick, humanification or sick pay, they take some of that with them. All right, fact number thirteen, we have built and are paying for a new plant that has a fifty to seventy-five year life span, and those rates now are, are barely above the inflation-adjusted rates from the seventies. We owe this remarkable accomplishment to the factors mentioned above. We built at the best time for interest rates. We were able to combine loans, and the bid came under budget. Just think where we would be if we didn't have those three blessings. It would, for every one percent that the rate would go up, it's four million dollars over the cost of amortization. Every one percent over the cost of a twenty-year loan. That's a whole year of budget, so it's a, you can see how fortunate we are. So, we can complain all we want about rates, we pay the same rates. We don't like it either, but it's, it's, we've, we've been blessed, actually. Number fourteen, elected officials should be proud that they put revenues first. Now, we had to make some tough decisions. That was thrown in our lap. I, you know, we will not do the same to future tough decisions. That was thrown in our lap. You know, we will not do the same to future administrations. We look ahead. What's coming down the line. Like, we need to hold our head high. You folks that were on council at that time and voted for that, you did the right thing. Number fifteen, current and future administrations will not be able to reduce rates, no matter what setup there. They won't be able to reduce rates as long as we are paying our mortgages on the plant, just as it would be as you have a home mortgage or car loan. It has to be paid for, unless there's grants that come along. And I don't plan on it, but if they do, we will take advantage of it. Or if we have a, someone that throws $20 million in their lap, we'll go pay for it. Wouldn't that be wonderful? Number sixteen, we have not been given any, given any concrete ideas about how we can reduce rates. We are, ears are open. And so, anybody has any ideas, council, people in the public, whatever, we're all ears. Let's come talk to us, you know? We're open to hearing any plan that you have to reduce rates. These are the facts, as we see them. And we're more than willing to open for discussion to how we can reduce rates, but we're keeping them as low as possible. And I did want to mention that currently our rates are still 20% lower than was recommended by our engineers, Jones and Henry. And that's only because we've been able to get those benefits of the lower interest rates and the lower cost of the plants. So, we're still 20% lower. We have to pay, we have to make over $4 million in that department. Now, one thing I did mention, the cost of water has gone up, and when that happens, people use less rate. So, if you have a 10% raise in rates, we're not seeing a 10% rate raise in revenue. So, that's something we need to keep in mind. We haven't seen that. So, people are saving money. They're saving, I understand how that works. But we still have obligations. We have to meet these obligations. The other thing, and I mentioned this before, and we've been very aggressive, you know, the way we can spread out the pain of new increases is to sell more water. And we've worked with us as council, two outside the city, and we were going County Road 35. Beach Grove, we picked up people. We picked up boards out at Winford there. So, those are all things that add up. We're aggressive to sell water. That will help to reduce the burden on all of us. So, keep that in mind. It's the only way we're gonna get this. So, thank you. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions? Moving on, the Service Safety Director's report.
I'll play Mr. Wagner tonight, and I'll say, first, you look, number one, we had some snow recently, right? The first snow event on the weekend, and they always seem to be coming on the weekends, by the way. We had an estimated hours, 113 hours of overtime, $3,400 bucks. The second one was, that was a longer snow event. That was the day we had approximately 15 inches of snow, and our crews were out and about and did a fantastic job. That cost $12,000 in overtime. Did you know we had a water break? Very cold. Those guys are extremely cold there, but we got it taken care of. We were holding our breath that we wouldn't have any, but sure enough, we did. As I mentioned, the sale of the water distribution garage went to par, and their bid was $320,000. And they have 30 days of close for the award date. The sale is now final at Mary Street Garage, as I mentioned. New orders are Hensley's. They're gonna have auto shop there. We have ODOT on Stage Three plans for Route Four North, and Branson and Carroll are making some minor corrections to the plans. We're still taking comments on Route Four North, the bike lanes for our public meeting until the tenth. So, if you have any comments, questions, please, we've got about, roughly till the end of the week. Legislation was submitted to ODOT on three upcoming projects. And number eight, we're still taking applications for general labor, skilled labor, till February 22nd. Please pick up an application at the mayor's office. Jeff is working with Bruce from Branson and Carroll, the Mill and Page list. I think we gave you a preliminary list, if I'm correct. Yes. Okay. If there's, if you guys have any comments, additions, deletions, the salt and the snow has been particularly hard on some streets, and which leads me into making foot in the mud for our upcoming renewal, streets renewal. So, that's coming in May, and we really need that. So, Jeff wanted to thank everybody who shoveled their sidewalk. It is a city ordinance that you must shovel your sidewalks. We aren't finding anybody, I know, realize the last 15 inches or whatever we had was extremely difficult. There's a lot of snow everywhere. Sidewalks now seem to be very clean, but it's, to me, it's disheartening to see people having to walk in the street. So, everyone is responsible for shoveling their own sidewalk, whether you are a resident or a landlord. Please take care of that with common courtesy. And that's it. Our Safety Service Director's report.
Okay. Questions or comments?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. McKeever?
I was asked by a constituent that wondered why the street sweeper was out on Skecher Road.
Skecher Road?
Yes. And a good distance out on Skecher Road. I just, and they, I had, it was today also.
I, yeah, it was on Clinton Street this morning, when I came to work.
And this, they asked me about Skecher Road and...
It would not be normally a place we sweep, unless he was going out to the...
Water plant.
No, no, well, no.
No, this was well passed.
What, by a private form?
No, he was passed out.
I'll find out, you know?
Okay. I was just, they asked, and I said, I agree with them.
I have no idea.
Any other questions or comments?
Thank you.
Okay. I need a motion about the Mill and Page. We need to put that into committee. I don't know if we'll have all the information this week or not, but let's get it into committee. So, I need a motion, please?
So.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Schock, second by Mr. McKeever, to put the Mill and Page project into public lands and finance. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Thank you. Moving on to the Law Director.
Thank you, Madam President. Two quick referrals. First, to finance and health and safety, or finance and service, I believe. We need to refer the manpower and the village ordinances for consideration of safety forces staffing in our various state enforcement departments. Second one is, we need to make a referral to the Health and Safety Committee for safety regulations regarding rental properties. By way of announcement, movie nights, we've got dates picked out, so those will be getting announced soon. So, those people that are interested in sponsoring movies, you know, you watch them for those dates, and you pick a date, you pick a movie. And I'm trying to keep those, last year we had a really good deal, so we'll see if we can do the same thing. Lastly, I want to talk about this briefly, because I want to feel the advantage of this. This is something that Chief Kepi posted on their, on the Research Police Department's Facebook page. From January 31st to July 31st of this year, the Ohio Bureau of Motor Vehicles is offering a reinstatement fee and speed program. What happens when you get your driver's license suspended for any number of things? I believe there are 16 different types of your driver's licenses suspended in Ohio, some of which are completely bureaucratic decisions. You have a reprocess of it. When your license is suspended, you have fines and costs and fees and all those sorts of things from the court or the agency that suspended you. But you also have reinstatement fees with the DMV. And it's a minefield. People have horrible trouble trying to navigate both the courts and the administrative agencies in DMV. I had a gentleman in court last week who owed the DMV reinstatement fees in excess of $60,000. It does add up. It adds up quick. So, the safety program is a tremendous benefit. Take advantage of it. Contact the DMV. Get the forms. There's, in true DMV fashion, there's lots of hoops and rules and things you need to jump through. But if you're one of those people that I see in court all the time, and you just can't get it straight, come see us. We'll help walk you through it. There's a form. It's available online. It is available from the DMV. If you don't have access to it online, come to my office. I'm sure the police department will, 42, I want to promise for you, but I know they will. It's just, you know, it's hard to raise a family in this day and age, and it's hard to keep a job if you don't have a driver's license. And our driving laws are probably some of the most complex in the country. So, take advantage of this. It's a huge benefit, and it really can, you know, it can change a lot. It's amazing how many people we see that don't have a license, can't navigate the complexity of this, can't afford to get it. I don't know how many you cite. I know I prosecuted at least three or four of we, probably. And those are the ones that come to court, the ones that pay, you know.
The more and more people are cited to grab another suspension and then speeding, I would, that's the move.
Yeah, it's an amazing number. It's really, it's a drag on our economy. It really is. So, take advantage of it. If you have questions, we'll track along, if you want, want you to get the...
Okay. Any questions or comments for the Law Director?
I just, recent, they're raised a, if you're gonna do that, you're gonna take all those steps. Make sure you follow the rest of the laws, too. This is the state required to have insurance. So, make sure you follow that up. Otherwise, you'll end up with another suspended license or date of coming in.
There's one, of course. The courts, just move on, is very aggressive about trying to talk people through the process. We try to help, and it's, you know.
It's to everyone's advantage that they, to be properly employed and to be supporting their families. It's for the community.
Yeah, and there's no studies, there's studies out there about, you know, the value of a high school education and your work, and the value of a college education and fees. There's no real studies that I know of about the value of the driver's license, but, you know, if you can't get out to the industrial park consistently and regularly on your own, it's hard to keep those jobs. So, take advantage of it. If you need help, there's everybody there. Will do.
Okay. Anything else? No? Okay. I need a motion then to put the manpower and bill in, into finance and service, Finance Committee and Service Committee.
So moved.
Mr. Wireball, motion by Mr. Wireball, second by Mr. Myers. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Thank you. And then, and to help in safety, the safes, some safety regs regarding rental properties. I need that to go into Health and Safety Committee. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. McKeever, second by Mr. Wireball. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Thank you very much. Okay. Now, if you want to slip out, Chief, you're more than welcome to. All in a day. Moving on to the auditor. Mrs. Shepherd?
Thank you, Madam President. You have a statement I can position for the end of January, and our income tax monthly comparison, and then the revenue tally, the budget, and they all look kind of low for January, but that's, that's kind of typical. That's why we have to have perioders until, you know, taxes and everything start rolling in. So, if you have any questions on those, you can ask at any time. One referral, see names for Finance Committee. We need appropriation reduction in Fund 282, Victims of Crime Act, Victim Advocate Personal Services, and the amount of $80.78 to correct an error in the 2019 budget. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for the auditor this evening, or comments? Okay, I need a motion then for this appropriation reduction. I need a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Fouts, second by Ms. Sack. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Okay, thank you. The Treasurer's Report for December of 2018 was given to you at the last meeting. I need a motion to accept and file that report.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. McKeever, second by Mr. Schock. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Thank you. These chiefs already done. Any comments for the fire departments? You want to share with us this evening?
Well, I've been here just to make sure we didn't have any questions on any of the other legislation that was involved with the SCA grant. The other thing I was wanting to present was that we are, received a grant from the State Fire Marshal's Office. This was a joint effort between all 13 fire departments within the county for a, it's a communications grant for the smart system. It's a multi-agency radio communication system. There were like 242 fire departments in 40 counties throughout the state of Ohio that received $3 million in funds from this. And there were 12 million in requests. The total for the, what all the 13 departments in the county are getting is six, over $619,000. And so, what this is going to do is help upgrade the communication system for the, for the whole entire county. And then, it's, it helps, moves us forward to better communications with surrounding counties and also, and actually throughout the state.
Okay, excellent. Any questions or comments for Captain Swireman?
I do have a lot of questions. Do you have a broken down what our user fees will be before?
And, well, okay, did you ask that? The radios have a $10 a month user fee. That is part of the grant. First year is covered. And I have a breakdown here of actually the entire grant. Each year, you're allowed to reapply and have the grant fees paid for. So, it just depends on where the fund, where the, where the fund is at, and how many people, how many departments apply.
I'm just curious if you have that number, because we should probably budge you for that, just in case.
And that would be, that would be next, next year. There's nothing in that for sure.
Okay. Anything else for Captain Swireman? No? Thank you very much. Coming this evening. I need a motion to accept the city officers' reports.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Fouts, second by Mr. Wireball. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Thank you. This is where we allow visitors' input regarding reports of standing and/or special committees and of city officers. Does anyone here to address council this evening? No one? For consideration of proposed legislation for the first time.
We have 10 pieces of legislation, eight of them are ordinances, two of them are resolutions. Ordinance number six, 2019, authorizing and directing the UciRus Public Service Safety Director in behalf of the City of UciRus, Ohio, to advertise for bids for the leasing of approximately 52 acres of tillable land in the city of UciRus located at Port UciRus Crawford County Airport, adjacent to State Route 98 and the tracks north of the Onsovery Runway. PPN 09-0001446.000 and 09-0001447.000. From April 1, 2019 through March 31, 2022, covering the 2019, 20, and 21 crop growing seasons with all such land to be planted in crops under the order of other crops of such similar height, and not placed in any government land bank program, and permitted to life-hollow said leased acreage being deemed not presently or in the foreseeable future needed for any municipal purposes, and to enter into a lease therefore with the highest invest bidder reserving the right of the city of UciRus except during planting and growing season to spread thereupon lime sludge, haul it, buy it from the wastewater treatment or water treatment plants, and declaring an emergency. Now, you'll see that our maps attached to all these funded land bid ordinances. That's referred back to public lands and buildings. Ordinance number seven, 2019, authorizing and directing the UciRus Public Service Safety Director in behalf of the City of UciRus, Ohio, to advertise for bids for the leasing of approximately 5.7 acres of tillable land in the aggregate along Crowder Road in UciRus Township comprising part of Shrine Park, formerly the UciRus Shrine Gun Club. PPN 09-0050066.000. From April 1, 2019 through March 31, 2022, covering the 2019, 20, and 21 crop growing seasons with all such land to be planted in crops and not placed in any government land bank program, and permitted to life-hollow said leased acreage being deemed not presently or in the foreseeable future needed for any municipal purposes, and to enter into a lease therefore with the highest invest bidder reserving the right of the city of UciRus except during the planting and growing season to spread thereupon lime sludge, haul it, buy it from the city wastewater treatment or water treatment plants, and declaring an emergency. That's referred back to public lands and buildings. Ordinance number eight, 2019, authorizing and directing the UciRus Public Service Safety Director in behalf of the City of UciRus, Ohio, to advertise for bids for leasing of approximately 35.5 acres of tillable land in the aggregate in UciRus Township adjoining railways of Port UciRus Crawford County Airport, part of PPNs 09-0050067.000, 09-0050068.000, and... dash zero-zero-five-zero-zero-six-seven-point-zero-zero-zero, zero-nine dash zero-zero-five-zero-zero-six-eight-point-zero-zero-zero, and zero-nine dash zero-zero-five-zero-zero-six-nine-point-zero-zero-zero. From April one, 2019 through March thirty-one, 2022, covering the 2019, 20, and 21 crop growing seasons with all such land to be planted in crops other than corn or other crops of such similar height, and not placed in any government land bank program and permitted to life-hollow said lease acreage being deemed not presently or in the foreseeable future needed for any municipal purposes, and to enter into a lease therefore with the highest invest bidder reserving the right of the City of Bussiris except during the planting and growing season to spread thereupon lime sludge hauled by it from the city wastewater treatment or water treatment plants and declaring an emergency. That is referred back to public lands and buildings. Ordinance number nine, 2019, authorizing and directing the Bussiris Public Service Safety Director in behalf of the City of Bussiris, Ohio, to advertise for bids for leasing of approximately seven acres of tillable land in the aggregate off of West Southern Avenue in the City of Bussiris located at the West Wastewater Treatment Plant on the southwest side of the property. PPN zero-eight dash zero-zero-one-four-eight-zero-zero dash zero-zero-zero from April one, 2019 through March thirty-one, 2022, covering the 2019, 20, and 21 crop growing seasons with all such land to be planted in crops and not placed in any government land bank program and permitted to life-hollow said lease acreage being deemed not presently or in the foreseeable future needed for any municipal purposes, and to be entered into a lease therefore with the highest invest bidder reserving the right of the City of Bussiris except during the planting and growing season to spread thereupon lime sludge hauled by it from the wastewater treatment or water treatment plants and declaring an emergency. That's referred to public lands and buildings. Ordinance number ten, 2019, authorizing and directing the Bussiris Public Service Safety Director in behalf of the City of Bussiris, Ohio, to advertise for bids for the leasing of approximately twenty-seven point thirty-eight acres of tillable land in the aggregate in Liberty Township along State Route 98 east adjoining Earthway Reservoir, Reservoir Number Four. PPNs twenty-nine point dash zero-zero-five-zero-two-six-zero dash point zero-zero-zero and twenty-nine dash zero-zero-five-zero-two-nine-three-point-zero-zero-zero. From April one, 2019 through March thirty-one, 2022, covering the 2019, 20, and 21 crop growing seasons with all such land to be planted in crops and not placed in any government land bank program and permitted to life-hollow said lease acreage being deemed not presently or in the foreseeable future needed for any municipal purposes, and to enter into a lease therefore with the highest invest bidder reserving the right of the City of Bussiris except during the planting and growing season to spread thereupon lime sludge hauled by it from the city wastewater treatment or water treatment plants, also reserving the right to terminate the lease or partial lease during any non-growing time, season, time period for the installation of a green or renewable energy program or test site, and declaring an emergency. That is referred to public lands and buildings. Ordinance number eleven, 2019, authorizing and directing the Bussiris Public Service Safety Director in behalf of the City of Bussiris, Ohio, to advertise for bids for the leasing of approximately seven acres of tillable land in the aggregate in the Township of Liberty on Key Strim located at the northeast corner of the Earthway Reservoir property. PPN two-nine dash zero-zero-zero-seven-four-eight-five-point-zero-zero-zero from April one, 2019 through March thirty-one, 2022, covering the 2019, 20, and 21 crop growing seasons with all such land to be planted in crops and not placed in any government land bank program, and permitted to life-hollow said lease acreage being deemed not presently or in the foreseeable future needed for any municipal purposes, and to be entered into a lease therefore with the highest invest bidder reserving the right of the City of Bussiris except during the planting and growing season to spread thereupon lime sludge hauled by it from the city wastewater treatment or water treatment plants and declaring an emergency. That is referred to public lands and buildings. Ordinance number twelve, 2019, reimbursing scheduled monies in the amounts of twenty percent from the sewage disposal fund, twenty percent from the waterworks fund, twenty percent from the solid waste management fund, and twenty percent from the stormwater utility fund, but the benefit of the city's general fund to defray 2018 operation costs of the City of Bussiris municipal offices and authorizing and directing the city auditor to draw thereupon therefore and declaring an emergency. That's referred back to finance. Ordinance number thirteen, 2019, admitting and supplementing ordinance number sixty-one, 2018, being the annual appropriations ordinance for 2019, by appropriating from unappropriated general funds, a sum of twenty thousand dollars to the contractual services line item and one thousand seven hundred and fifteen dollars and eighty-six cents to the materials and supplies line item, both line items being within the police department category within the program, one security presence of property subparquet, and declaring an emergency. That's referred back to finance. Resolution number two oh five, 2019, authorizing and directing the service safety director in behalf of the City of Bussiris, Ohio, to advertise for bids and to enter into contractor contracts not exceeding the already budgeted nine hundred eighty-nine thousand six hundred and twenty-nine dollars and forty-seven cents with the lowest invest bidder or bidders for the Group Two sewers project, and finally authorizing and directing the Bussiris City Auditor to draw a warrant or warrants in payment therefore from the appropriate appropriation or appropriations and declaring an emergency. That's referred to the planning committee. Resolution number two oh six, 2019, authorizing and directing the service safety director in behalf of the City of Bussiris, Ohio, to advertise for bids and to enter into contractor contracts not exceeding one hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars in federal assistance to firefighter grant funds with the lowest invest bidder or bidders for the fire department's breathing apparatus equipment, and finally authorizing and directing the Bussiris City Auditor to draw a warrant or warrants in payment therefore from the appropriation, appropriate appropriation or appropriations, and declaring an emergency. That's referred to the planning committee.
Thank you.
Nice work.
Yeah.
I'll do remember my last statement.
Yeah. I need a motion to accept this as the first reading of legislation.
So moved.
Sorry. Motion by Mr. Myers, second by Mr. McHever. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. This is the time, I need to refer all of these back to the originating committee. Ordinance, ordinance number six dash 2019, ordinance seven dash 2019, ordinance eight dash 2019, ordinance nine dash 2019, ordinance ten dash 2019, and ordinance number eleven dash 2019, which are the farmlands, all back to public lands and buildings. Ordinance number twelve dash 2019 is to finance committee. Ordinance thirteen dash 2019 is to finance committee. Resolution two oh five dash 2019 is to the planning committee, and resolution number two oh six dash 2019 is to the finance committee. This is the time where any member of the general public may present their input or comments on legislation that has been read for the first time. Does anyone want to address counsel this evening, or auditor?
Yes, I just, I just discovered something, and I apologize for not catching it before, because I didn't get it looked at close enough, on the enterprise reimbursements number that will be twelve dash 2019. The total that we are showing, it doesn't mention the additional eight hundred and sixty-two dollars and twenty-one cents per fund. It's in addition to that twenty percent. That was for the phone. It was in our minutes and everything, but it's not reflected in this ordinance.
Okay.
Yeah.
Can we do this, or should we hold this off until the next meeting?
We need, E sixty-one needs to change in each one, in each one of those.
Eight sixty-two, twenty-one.
You can move to amend the legislation as part of the second reading, and then wait for the third reading, or you can bring it all back and do second, third reading next week.
Let's, let's hold it until the next meeting, then.
That's fine, that's fine. I apologize.
So we'll, we'll put this one on hold. Twelve dash 2019, we'll go on hold. Okay. Thank you.
Good catch, before pass.
Okay, this is where we have public participation. Any member of the general public may present their input or comments on legislation that has been read for the first time. No one? Okay, do we need a recess? No? Okay. Committee reports for pending legislation, public lands and buildings.
Public lands and buildings is favorable to ordinance six dash 2019, ordinance seven dash 2019, ordinance eight dash 2019, ordinance nine dash 2019, and ordinance ten dash 2019, and ordinance eleven dash 2019, the farmland bid.
Thank you. Finance committee?
Finance committee is favorable to ordinance thirteen dash 2019, the various appropriations, and favorable to resolution two oh six dash 2019, the fire department equipment bid.
Okay, thank you. And planning?
Planning committee is favorable to resolution two oh five dash 2019, which is for.
Okay, thank you. I need a motion to accept these reports.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Foote, second by Mr. Myers. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. For further consideration of pending legislation, for the second and third reading of proposed ordinance number six dash 2019, which is farmland bid number one, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare it an emergency?
So moved. Second.
Wireball?
Yes.
Foote?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
McHever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Truka?
Yes.
Ordinance number six, 2019.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance number six dash 2019?
So moved. Second.
McHever?
Yes.
Foote?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Truka?
Yes.
Ordinance number six dash 2019, farmland bid number one, is duly adopted. For the second and third readings of proposed ordinance number seven dash 2019, which is farmland bid number two, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare it an emergency?
So moved.
Thank you.
Wireball?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Foote?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
McHever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Truka?
Yes.
Ordinance number seven, 2019.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance number seven dash 2019?
So moved. Second.
Myers?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
McHever?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Truka?
Yes.
Foote?
Yes.
Ordinance seven dash 2019, which is farmland bid number two, is duly adopted. For the second and third readings of proposed ordinance number eight dash 2019, which is farmland bid number three, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare it an emergency?
So moved. Second.
Wireball?
Yes.
Foote?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
McHever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Truka?
Yes.
Ordinance number eight, 2019.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance number eight dash 2019?
So moved. Second.
That was, okay. Shaw?
Yes.
Foote?
Yes.
McHever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Truka?
Yes.
Ordinance number eight dash 2019, farmland bid number three, is duly adopted. For the second and third reading of proposed ordinance number nine dash 2019, the farmland bid number four, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the readings of the caption and text, and declare it an emergency?
So moved. Second.
Wireball?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Truka?
Yes.
Foote?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
McHever?
Yes.
Ordinance number nine, 2019.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance number nine dash 2019?
So moved. Second.
McHever?
Yes.
Foote?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Truka?
Yes.
Ordinance nine dash 2019, farmland bid number four, is duly adopted. For the second and third readings of the proposed ordinance number ten dash 2019, which is farmland bid number five, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare it an emergency?
So moved. Second.
McHever, uh, Wireball?
Yes.
Foote?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
McHever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Truka?
Yes.
Ordinance number ten, 2019.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance number ten dash 2019?
So moved. Second.
Foote?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Truka?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
McHever?
Yes.
Ordinance number ten dash 2019, farmland bid number five, is duly adopted. For the second and third reading of proposed ordinance number eleven dash 2019, do I hear, which is farmland bid number six, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare it an emergency?
So moved. Second.
Wireball?
Yes.
Foote?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
McHever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Truka?
Yes.
Ordinance number eleven, 2019.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance number eleven dash 2019?
So moved. Second.
Myers?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
McHever?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Truka?
Yes.
Foote?
Yes.
Ordinance number eleven dash 2019, which is farmland bid number six, is duly adopted. For the second and third readings of proposed ordinance number twelve dash 2019, this one's on hold. For the second and third readings of proposed ordinance number thirteen dash 2019, which are various appropriations, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules and waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare it an emergency?
So moved. Second.
Wireball?
Yes.
Foote?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
McHever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Truka?
Yes.
Ordinance number thirteen, 2019.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance number thirteen dash 2019?
So moved. Second.
Myers?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.[1524.31]
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Truka?
Yes.
Foote?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Truka?